Good evening, everyone. I call to order the Board of Directors Committee of the Board Meeting for October 17, 2022. The talk these stands.
The allegiance to our man, of the United States, where we make a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we gonna call vocal? Chair Morales. Chair Ham. Vice Chair Biden Washington. President Bill Neal. President Jim.
Mcclair.
Chair Ben. Chair Levindus Stevens. Bill Ryan. Okay, first we'll begin with our Stone County Intermediate Unit report from Chair Betty Mcclair.
Good evening. For DCIU, their board meeting this past month, in October 2nd, spoke to the approved contracts for various school districts. Our contracts with DCIU, which is Delaware County Intermediate Unit, I know that we're still working with restorative practices, teaching and instruction. And we're having a board training here for the board members, a professional development, for the board members here on November 16th.
November 14th.
Stand corrected. November 14th. All other updates with regards to what we are doing intricately with DCIU, I'll be able to better tell you about next month after speaking with the super. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, any questions for Chair Mcclair? There aren't any. Now, our legislative liaison report from our Chair, Ms. Lynn Morales.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Today, I just want to present to you about three pieces of legislation. Two are currently being produced by the Senate, one by the House. The Senate Bill 1302, from Senator Kearney, introduces school-based youth court pilot program. If anyone is familiar with Mr. Greg Vols, he's been very instrumental locally in pushing for school-based youth courts. It's basically a way for us to teach our children restorative justice practices and, you know, conflict resolution. All of the things that they would need to use outside of school to stay out of trouble, basically, to stay out of trouble. So, part of this bill is a request for a transfer of $9.5 million from the PA General Fund to an established youth court fund. And those funds will be used to execute grants to schools looking to implement the youth court program. And that's Senator Kearney. Then that Senate bill is 1318. This is related to cursive handwriting. This is Senator Laggerholm. And this will require that all students receive cursive writing instruction and be able to read and write in cursive by 5th grade. And charter schools would not be excluded from this requirement. So, yeah, this is going to be one of those. And then the last bill is House Bill 2605, which is Rep. Smith Wade. And this will add an amended article to the public school code with respect to school library restoration pilot programs. And would afford low-achieving schools the opportunity to apply for a grant not to exceed $170,000 for the purpose of restorative library practices.
Question on that $9.5 million request, that's right. What's that bill number?
The Senate Bill 1302.
1302.
Yes. And...
Right. And they want to, that'd be across the Commonwealth?
Yes. So, they want to establish first a youth court non-item, so it has its own account.
Right.
And then they want to fund that account from the general fund with $9.5 million, which will be used for allocation of grants for the program.
Across the Commonwealth, each school district, okay. That's one. It's not focused simply just here, because you mentioned Greg Vols.
So, the schools should participate in the private program.
You also said it was grants, right? So, they would have to write...
Yeah, well, Greg Vols, I assume, who would be the point person, you don't know, that's to be developed, yeah.
I don't know that. If schools wish to participate in the program, they would present insurance and then follow the process.
President Neal, I just have one update for the board, and that's in terms of the youth court. So, we were actually invited by a neighboring district to visit their youth court to look at that program. So, we have a team that will be going to see that.
Where was that, Dr. Neal?
Upper Darby.
Upper Darby, okay.
So, we currently don't have that program?
We don't, but it's something that we are looking at. What is the potential for the district and present that to the board and receiver. But we'd like to go visit the program.
It's been here before.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, now, we're here for our curriculum report, from Dr. Parker. Chair Ham, you want to say?
Yeah, I met with Dr. Parker, and one thing that she has or mentioned in terms of curriculum with the upcoming receivers meeting involves the, more or less, the rollout of the libraries. Yes, classic libraries, in every K through 12, or was it? K through 8, yeah, K through 8. And I think that's a good thing to look forward to. My question to her was, was it digital? And it's not. It's physical. Physical books for those grades. So, that's a good thing. And we had discussions in terms of curriculum, in terms of R curriculum, which I'm looking forward to some things that she has planned. And for, I just want to get off tangent, that cursive, isn't that interesting? For that to be coming back from the state level?
It needs to.
I mean, K through 5, I mean, on the curriculum, so, you know. So, that's that.
Could you expand on the library as well as the curriculum?
So, the libraries, so the scholastic libraries that are going to be on the receivers, can I start getting it?
Yes. So, we are very excited about the scholastic classroom libraries. They are from, they are a reorder of classroom libraries that we ordered a couple of years ago for our classrooms, K-8. And we're excited because these are the diversity issue of those classroom libraries, where our students are going to get to experience characters that look like them and underrepresented groups. So, in particular, one of the libraries is around African-American and Latino boys. So, the content of those books will hopefully encourage our students to read more. So, our K through 8, our school districts curriculum, I think Mr. Ham is referring to a conversation we had about an Atlas program, where we have all of our curriculum for the district housed. It's an electronic system that has all of our unit plans and curriculum maps housed. And it tells the teachers what they should be teaching in each of the subject areas. So, I think that's what, is that what you're referencing?
Yeah, yeah, that was, I don't know.
Yeah. So, all of our teachers have access to it in the district, and they utilize that to create their lesson plans.
I have another question.
Sure.
So, we have purchased quite a bit of curriculum materials. Has there been, I don't know that there's been an update as far as success, or the kids, students are able to master? Is it working?
So, that's a great question. We could say it is working in terms of it being consistent resources that our students have, right? What are the outcomes for those resources? Like, what, is it yielding the outcomes that we want? I would say that's a work in progress. I would say that we're building toward that. But I would say that the foundation is laid for students to get those outcomes that we seek. But we also have to focus on how teachers are using those materials, right? And utilizing this Atlas system that I spoke about, and making sure that the lesson plans are aligned and instructional practices go with those resources and are impacting our students every day.
So... I know it's not, it doesn't happen in 12 months. I realize that.
So, we have like an evaluation process. We have a curriculum revision process in our district. And each of the subject areas are revised on like a schedule. I mean, we could share that with you all. So, that's sort of how it's evaluated, the actual materials themselves. We see growth in our students with using this consistent materials, because now all the teachers know how to use it, right? Because that's one thing, when you are buying new resources frequently, then there's time for teachers to learn how to use it. Time for teachers to understand all of the components that come with it. And sometimes the student outcome is delayed. And so, we're looking for it to, we're looking to reap those benefits, but it's just a little bit delayed in terms of what each component is yielding us for the outcomes. We'll be able to tell you a little bit more about that growth when we go over the iReady data. Any other questions?
Chair Mcclair, I want to share with you the other checks and balances around school improvement, the school improvement meetings, for example, with support, and what that looks like.
So, sure. We have instituted this school year another layer of support for our schools around school improvement. So, we work with the DCIU, and there are monthly meetings that happen with our school leaders, as well as monthly routines. And then we have quarterly routines that we work with the DCIU and the state team on. This year, we are incorporating weekly meetings with the academic team around those school improvement goals, where we're actually discussing those goals and, more importantly, getting into classrooms to see actually the implementation of the school improvement plans.
You're welcome. We move on to our inner resources report. It's ready.
Thank you. So, the HR department will be requesting approval from the receiver, appointments, a reassignment, resignations, a retirement, extracurricular assignments, and tuition reimbursement. We remain committed to the ongoing recruitment of district vacancies, including those that are identified as hard to fill. The district vacancies, I'm sorry, the district vacancies are currently posted on the district's website. We post on PA REAP, K-12 Spot, LinkedIn, and Indeed as well. We also partner with various agencies, including county services, Blazer Works, and Delta T to help us with recruitment efforts. The HR department is also continuing its initiatives to continue employee health and wellness. For the upcoming months, we'll be communicating to district staff several upcoming events and campaigns geared towards employee health and wellbeing, in conjunction with the district's Employee Assistance Program through Penn Medicine and our collaboration with the Delaware County Healthcare Trust. Lastly, in conjunction with the Department of Curriculum and Instruction, we will be seeking approval of a temporary employment agreement for a pre-K counts consultant, which will be funded through the district's 2024 through 2025 pre-K counts grant. Any questions regarding?
For the positions that are vacant, probably the asylum for core courses for high school?
I don't have a solid number. I can get back to you on that. But for core courses for high school, I am aware of two science vacancies currently. They have been vacant, so we filled a position over the summertime, and it became vacant due to unforeseen circumstances. So, they have been vacant since the beginning of the school year. We have been working, as I mentioned, with our agencies to fill those positions, and we have been actively recruiting as well. They're all posted. We're reviewing applicants daily and reaching out for screenings.
Understanding that they've been filled, but what is the continuum of them being filled? So, is it like a person here for a few days, and then a different person for the next few days? How is it going to impact their testing and ability to receive credit for those classes?
Okay, so, right now, the positions are vacant, so it's not that someone's coming in for a few days and stepping out for a few days. This particular position has been vacant since the start of the school year. As far as testing, I can't really speak to that. And again, any additional information you need, I'll need to gather that and get back to you. They are currently vacant, yes.
How are the children receiving education? I'm asking, what is the supplement right now for those classes? There is none.
Is there subservice?
We do work with substitute agencies that bring people in. There isn't someone who's in there every day, the same person currently.
We had physics, a physics teacher that was a position vacant.
The position is still vacant, yes. Those niche subjects, the reality is we don't get a lot of applicants, so there's some headhunting that has to take place. We are contacting people. Again, we're working with four or five different websites where we post those positions. We do co-calling through our agencies as well, and it's just, it's something that we're working through, but it just hasn't worked out for us just yet.
Delaware County Bar doing enrollment to try and...
Those partnerships with the colleges in the area. Yeah, so that's something that we do. We have active partnerships with colleges and universities. We do a lot of student teaching through people in the surrounding areas that come in. But again, the sciences and the math, we don't see a lot of people for those specific positions.
Okay, we'll move on down to our financial. It's a report that is gathered.
Good evening. So, I'll just kind of go through the agenda items. I gave out in your package the routine or monthly reports that we give out each month, C1 through C4, which is the monthly tax. The first one is the monthly tax revenue collection, and it just indicates what we have collected for the month. And for the month of September, we've collected $2.1 million. Year-to-date, we have collected $13.9 million in tax revenue, which is about 80% of the budget. For the city of Chester, their collection has been 79%. The township is 87%, and then the borough, we've collected about 82% of the taxes that we have budgeted for. Overall, in our budget, typically, our collection rate is about 85%. The second report that you have in your package is the Treasury report. And the Treasury report indicates the balance and the cash ins and out for each account that we have with the school district. And so, on that Treasury report, you'll see every cash account that we have and the various funds that have come into that cash report and that goes out of that cash record in a very general category. So, for the month of September, you can see that the cash balance is $27 million. And so, looking at that, you might go, wow, $27 million. But in reality, we have restricted funds and assigned funds of about $7.8 million. And those funds are funds that are specifically assigned to certain projects, grants, capital, student activity funds. Those funds cannot be, they are assigned to different projects for the student activity. And then if you, if you want to consider that we, with the district, we did our major funding every two months. So, we want to be able to have in, in, on cash, at least two months of payroll. And then you're talking maybe another $6.9 million for that. And then you also want to pay your medical expenses, which result in about $1 million. And then you have, of course, the first school payments that are coming up. That's about $5.5 million. Then, if you take into account the quarterly retirement report that they've sent out for our retirement benefits that we paid out on the quarter at the end of September, beginning of October, that's $2.2 million. Our regular payables for two months averages around $2.3 million. And I'm saying all that to say that, well, after you get that $27 million, we're looking at about $1.4 million remaining in that balance to kind of carry us to the next quarter. So, to the next two months, until we get another monthly, large portion of our income from the state and fiddle. So, just to keep perspective about the $27 million. So, that's the Treasury report. It shows cash activity in and out of the accounts. The second report that you have in yours that we do every month is the payroll report. And currently, that payroll report for the month of September was $2.8. And keep in mind, about $400,000 of that was some additional incentive pays that was issued in the month of September. The final cash report is the payments report. And so, that report just lists all the vendors and individuals that we paid out in our payables department for the month of September, which was about $11 million. Again, 57% of that was charter schools, and that was $6.4 million that we ended up paying the charter schools. $2.3 of that, which was about 27%, 20%, I'm excuse me, was Esther Projects. And then the remainder of that was the 23% or $2.6 million, which was our normal operational vendor payments. Any questions with that, Parker, so far? You said, Bucks, Connie, are you? I can, if you send me, email me the question, I can just, I'll send you the detail. Yeah. And then as far as the other items for what's coming up on the agenda, there's also the ACT 1. C5 is ACT 1, which is the PDE maximum percentage of increase allowed for tax increase. They're preparing for budgets now in 2025, 26, 27 budget, 25, 26 budget. And so, they've already sent out the indication that for the Chester opening school district, the ACT 1 maximum increase is 6.3% in the tax rate. And that's not saying that we're going to use that. It's saying that PDE has said you can go up to that maximum without any additional approval from PDE. And that's all that's saying. 6.3%. Yeah, and last year was the same thing, but we did not increase our taxes by that. It's just that PDE has set maxims for each school district, and there's an approval process that takes place if you want to do anything higher than that. C6 talks about the purchase and the sale agreement. This is the, and I kind of spoke about this last month. This is the agreement that allows us to sell our delinquent taxes so that we can get income upfront. And the disagreement says it will sell our delinquent taxes to the vendor, and they will in turn do the collections, and they will pay us upfront, a portion of the funds transferred over to them. And this agreement is for 2024, 2025, and 26. C7 through C8 are assessment appeals, which result in an increase, which will result in an increase of revenue. If you look at the detail, both those assessment appeals were increases in the existing assessment appeals. C9 is a tax settlement agreement. Four. Okay. Yes. So, am I ahead of time? Okay, all right. All right. I'm sorry about that. So, C9 is a tax settlement agreement. Can't go into much detail more than that, because it's a settlement agreement, and there's specific language in the agreement that says we can't disclose any additional information. C10 through C13 are administrative staff attending various conferences. You'll see that on the agenda, who it pertains to and what conference. And then the last was membership, professional memberships for both the deputy superintendent, Dr. Sutton, and, I'm sorry, yeah, Dr. Sutton, and then the chief academic officer, Dr. Parker, for their memberships, professional memberships. And you'll see that in the detail behind that as well. Some general comments, some other things that are not in the agenda, just to make you aware that we, and you probably already know this, but we did sign the charter agreement with Chester County Charter School, which locked us into a lower rate than the existing, than our PDE 363 form. So, we did sign that agreement. Currently, because it's retroactive, we have, part of that agreement is that we will need to catch up for July, August, and September, which resulted in about $600,000. So, for those, for the next six months, they gave us six months to pay that. We not only have to pay the charter amount for each month, we are adding another $151,000 for the next six months in order to catch that up. Some good news, the IRS refunded us $591,000, not dollars, $591,000, the IRS refunded us for a duplicate charge back in 2021, which was unexpected revenue into the account. Any questions? Yes, sir.
You spoke in the past about not being able to complete audits because of the lack of documentation. What happens in that case, where the documentation just cannot be found? How can you continue an audit?
So, what will happen is if we, when, or if we get to the point where the auditors say, okay, we're going to just not look for any more documentation again, and then what happens is we will get a rating, right? And then what happens is we will get a, a rating, right? So, and then we'll get, um, we'll, we'll get a, a negative rating, a negative report. But the audit will be done, it's just that we'll have findings.
We're paying the, the charter, we owe that money to the charter school. Why were we not paying them in June, July and August?
So we were paying them at the regular rate because the agreement wasn't final. So we were paying them at last year's rate. Just, just those particular charter schools that are related to that, um, settlement agreement. Yes. It did go up, but it's not as, um, it's, it's at thirty thousand for, I think, special, special education. But our normal rate is close to forty something, like the lower forties. Yes. Last year, I, if, if my memory is correct, it was like twenty-eight, twenty-nine, somewhere around there. Yes. So, and, and then again, again, just keep in mind, uh, so when you enter into agreements and just inflation alone, right? So you, you can expect some kind of increase, it's just not an incremental increase. And when you think about two thousand dollars, that's less than, that's not even ten percent, right? Increase, if you think about it like that. Understood. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hales, for your report. And also thank you for your, um, for this report on the payables. Cause it's good to put your eyes on some numbers and you can see what's being paid out. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Our, um, our athletic department, where we do, um, maybe do games, football games, basketball games, anything, where, is that money in general fund?
So it depends on what it is, like, so if it's homecoming, the homecoming portion, except for the court activity funds go into the general fund. All the other activity goes into student activity. So it just depends on where, where it's at.
You made ten, one, one, one and ten, one, two, nine, zero, because each charter school have a payment to each of the budgets. What are, what are the differences?
So, um, ten, uh, one, what was it, one, one? No, no, just the, the, the next four digits. Okay, hold up. So the ten, one, one, zero is regular education. And I think if the other one starts with twelve, so that's for special education. And so that's why you have one rate, because it's a different rate for each one. Yeah. You're welcome. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, now I'm here from Ms. Hales. Want to present, um, better brains.
Thank you, everyone. So I'm not going to present, I'm not going to do the overview of our grants this evening. I'll come back at your next meeting and present the grants. But I did want to present, um, the items that we are asking to be funded, um, over the next month. So before you, in your packet, you should have a list of the items that are going to be added for consideration. Starts with bats and theater. So I'm not going to go in the interest of time. The first fourteen items are all after-school and summer vendors. We issued a request for proposal, um, during the month of October. We received approximately thirty proposals from different groups. Um, the committee met yesterday to actually go through the proposals and the, these are fourteen that were actually selected. So these are, um, fourteen groups that are going to provide a variety of education, um, support, physical activity support, um, social emotional learning, uh, arts and crafts. And they are all listed here before you. Uh, they add up, they total to about four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. They are going to be funded through a variety of grant funds that we have that include the Twenty-First Community Century Learning Center Cohort Twelve Funding, which is a new grant that we received that is actually a five-year grant. Um, they will also be funded out of our Ready to Learn Grant and our Title Four and Title One, um, School Improvement Grant Funds. I'm sorry, not our, that's another item. So if you have any questions on the first fourteen items, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you for this report. Get back to business, see the items. But in the next one, is it possible you can add the column for which schools that these programs?
Yes, I can see that, yes. Mm-hmm. So I tried to list in this report, just because I knew it was a lot of information, if the vendor was going to be supporting K to five or middle school, six to eight or nine to twelve, but I can break it out for you, yes.
So who's Chester Upland Youth Soccer?
So the Chester Upland Youth Soccer is a five oh one C three entity that has already been providing, um, physical, physical activities, actually teaching our students K through five soccer. Um, they also provide health and wellness and, um, nutrition and team building. So they actually are a group that, uh, is a five oh one C three entity that is currently actually working with and has partnered with the school district for the last three years. Yes.
Let me repeat again, uh, various funds. It's going to cover some of this, you said Title Four.
So we have, um, the, the, under the fund source, that column, um, the, half of these vendors will be compensated through our newly awarded Twenty-First Community Center Learning, I'm sorry, Twenty-First Community Center Learning Grant Cohort Twelve. And we received approximately, no, not approximately, we did receive one point one million, um, for the next five years. So each year between twenty-five and twenty-nine, we'll receive a little over one point one million in Cohort Twelve Funds. And those are actually, it's comprised of three different grants. So we have a grant for K to five, a grant for six to eight and a grant for ninth to twelfth graders. So the grants are only going to fund the vendors provided before you, but they'll also fund teachers that will be providing services, um, as well as, um, supplies. The CAT Center actually did partner with us last year, um, through our Cohort Eleven Grant, and it was a, it was a good partnership.
I just want to confirm something, when you said ready to learn as a grant, is this something that's separate from the ready to learn adequacy funding? Because that will, that will dictate my question.
That is a good question, yes. So the ready to learn grant, um, is, we, the district has, has been receiving ready to learn funds for the last three years and our grant has typically been about one point four million. This year with the, um, the reallocation of funds, actually the new, the new, the new funds that have been legislatively created out of the Adequacy Act. And Ms. Hales can probably speak more to the tax side of that. That's not, yes. But we are, the district will be receiving an additional five point five million in our, in our ready to learn. So combined between our, the traditional, one point four million will also be receiving another five point five million.
My question is about, that five point five million is not grant. That five point five million is adequacy gap funding. So it's supposed to be used to catch our babies up from, you know, COVID and level. So when they say we don't have equitable education in the city of Chester, that specific five point plus million is so that we can catch our babies up to the other school districts. My, my problem and what I would like to see is what, which of these programs are the actual grant and which are the programs are the funding? Because the funding requires programs that have certified teachers and spaces that are closing the gap between rate and the match.
Yes, so.
To separate out the grant from the funding.
Yes, so when I come back to your next meeting, I will be able to have that breakout for you. So we actually have to submit an application by October twenty-sixth. So the internal team is still meeting, um, to go over how we're going to spend those additional funds. So the one point four billion that, uh, I'm speaking about in terms of the extended learning, we already had budgeted extended learning, which is after-school and or summer programming in our, our original grant, so not the adequacy grant.
Ms. Hales, if we could probably call this change, uh, towards the board and then we want to kind of probably clear it, uh, a narrative document just to explain these grants and their purpose. Uh, and then the second, uh, as a follow-up to board members. So are there a, a number of allowable expenditure under that grant? And we can share that as well as the Excel document we have of all the districts and the percent increases across the country.
Okay.
No, that's fine, but what I'm, what I'm asking to see, I trust you when it comes to the grant part. What I'm asking is the funding piece. So a piece of the ready to learn, like even if you label it ready to learn grant, ready to learn funding, the ready to learn adequacy funding part is the part that, um, uh, is the part that I am.
Yeah, that's why we want to share the Excel document when we're going to break it out. Just want to show you that.
Okay, but that one is not a grant. I just don't want us to label the funding.
It's an application.
It is.
The same process as every other funding source.
It's not a competitive, it's not a competitive grant. But we still do have to submit an application before we receive the funds.
Well, on the back page, you have, I'm sorry, will you finish? The, um, back page, you have DCIU non-public Title One and Title Two service agreement.
Yes, so those are additional items that I'm bringing up before you that are in addition to the four hundred and sixty-six thousand. So on the back page, um, we already discussed the scholastic, which we're asking for three hundred and forty-six thousand. That is from our twenty-three, twenty-four ready to learn grant. So we had a line item for school reform services, um, and we were just spending out, we were spending out that grant. The Avid Center, Professional Development and Career Readiness Materials, that is a, uh, a renewal grant for our Chester High School building, um, that is going to be coming out of their Title One School Improvement Allocation. The, under the business items that I have for you, the scholarship is our annual renewal for our visitor and attendance management systems at our Chester High School STEM and Toby Farms Building. That is coming out of a PCCD Mental Health and Safety Grant. So that's actually a renewal so that we can continue our visitor management systems. So those are the scanners that we have at those schools. And the DCIU non-public Title One and Title Two Service Agreement, that is our annual agreement with the IU to provide thirty, third-party contract, Title One and Title Two Services to our non-public partners. So we have, um, several non-public schools that Title One and Title Two Funds are passed through us that we have to provide services to. So like Druxton Newman Academy, Frederick Douglass, those schools. The cat, the parochial schools, yes. Yes.
Four years, we have seen, uh, our test scores down pretty well. And now that you have funding that says that it's supposed to make up for or catch up our, our population. If you don't see, is there another way to, to see, uh, progress besides test scores?
There are, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer that to, uh, Dr. Parker and or Dr. Sutton, um.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, are there any other? I'm not, I was just going to yield my time to them. Or are we talking about the ready to learn grant and that adequacy portion?
No, it's not, it's not really that, but it's.
It's okay.
Looking from this side of, of the table, we've heard about money that was supposed to, to things that at the end of the day, once the next September comes, now we're trying to get, uh, uh, new program or a new grant. And I'm just wondering, is there a way to see progress? Because if it's not in a test school, what do we, what do we have to believe in?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mrs. Hales about, um, evaluating our after-school programs so that we can measure that, like you just said, like we're doing, we're going to do some, well, some observations of those programs so that we can see our students benefiting from these programs. And I think for a more direct sort of answer to that is in the work that they produce, in the things, those are, this is another example. In, um, the improvement in some of the activities that we have for students, the more children that we get to be involved, what work products do they, um, present to us? We have an event, academic event, the science fair, we also can measure through those kinds of events, right? How many more children are participating in the science fair and what do their projects look like? Because we started at one place, right? We started with a certain number of children participating and what those products look like. And then we just, we, um, offered support to those schools, offered support to those children and along with after-school programs where they're working on those projects and the resources that we have, we should be seeing our children performing better across the board, not just at, um, the standardized testing.
I'll just, I'll close out in terms of grants. Um, this year we were, the past year, twenty-three, twenty-four, we were heavily monitored with our ESA, our, which are our Title One, Two, Three and Four Grants and our ESSER Grants. And this year, PDE is asking us, uh, no, not asking us, they are telling us that all of our grant resources have to match up with our school plans, our comprehensive school plans. So if what we're asking the state for in terms of grant funds, if we can't demonstrate it in our plan, they're going to send the application back and say, this is not included in your school plan. So we have to make sure, um, because those plans do have measurements in them. So the funds that we receive are directly supposed to help aid the, the student improvement. So we should see some outcomes, yes. Thank you.
And we will be glad to share with the board these student improvement plans that the talk room will answer for.
I also think that those, uh, spelling bees, you see the progress that the students do on those spelling bees, because I've been for the past few years and. Yeah, they, they are really doing it, so we see progress there as well.
Okay, um, people services, Dr. Bosse, do you have anything to present to us?
Yes, I have. Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, so there's only one agenda item on this receiver's, uh, agenda for the month, and that relates to an affiliation agreement with St. Joe's University regarding their prevention academy. Specifically, the purpose of that particular, uh, program is to work with our students starting in fifth grade. Uh, and we plan to expand up, so fifth grade will be the starting point around substance abuse prevention as well as appropriate decision-making. And so they will provide direct support to students with licensed, uh, substance abuse counselors, uh, providing tier one support, uh, as well as assisting with our MTSS teams along with the other grants that we have already in place. And so that affiliation agreement will allow us to start the work with them. And our goal is to start in January, uh, because there's some planning and some boarding of supplies that we need to do prior to that. Any specific questions? Correct. Uh, so we have a couple of grants that we will be able to use in connection with that. Uh, so one would be, for instance, the PCCD grant as an example. Um, but then we have, uh, other personnel through, for instance, the BSDA grant, uh, who they will be working in conjunction with as well. Uh, we have provided to all school leaders a list of all the mental health supports that are available to students in their school. And we will also be sharing that across our website as well as, uh, social media platforms as well, so that parents, uh, and students also know how to access those resources. But we wanted to make sure that, uh, building leaders were clear on the specific support. But we wanted to make sure that, uh, building leaders were clear on the specific supports that have been added to their building as well as when those support personnels will be at their building. And so we've done a lot of work around that, and so this will help supplement that work as well.
How often do you expect this program to be on site?
So we're still in the initial planning phases of it, but based upon our conversation, uh, it would be two to three times a week. Uh, we really wanna make sure that we're building that capacity and conversation with building leaders. And so that's our next step is that we're scheduling, uh, some opportunities for meet and greet with building leaders so that they'll have an opportunity, one, to provide their support of the program, but then two, have a better understanding of what scheduling coordination would need to look like within their building to support it. So our goal would be two to three days a week. Uh, the lessons are approximately 45 minutes. Uh, and so the goal is that there are eight weeks of lessons at minimum that would be provided to students.
Vendors to provide this service or you just, or did you, did you select St. Joseph's?
So there are other vendors who will also be providing services as well. So for instance, we have the SADER grant, uh, which is the substance abuse education reduction grant, um, which allows for a similar service, but that is starting in our, uh, high school. So we have a SADER grant, um, drug and alcohol prevention counselor who works with STEM and Chester High School. And so again, we're trying to make sure that we are providing support at different levels so that individual comes into the schools, uh, one or two days a week at STEM and Chester High School. But we also wanna, for lack of better terms, catch students before they get to middle school. And so that's why we've elected to start in fifth grade and begin to continue to work our way up as well.
They do not have to opt them in?
Uh, one thing I also just wanna add, uh, that I think is important for context, the funds that are being used, uh, from the St. Joseph's side, uh, to help supplement what the district will be providing in terms of material ordering and those sort of, uh, requirements, is also being, uh, funded through the opioid settlement. And so it's a number of districts throughout Delaware County are also joined, uh, as a part of this initiative as well. And there are also local, uh, resources that we are also, uh, partnering with as well. They're just not yet on the agenda, and so we've had some other conversation with other organizations who will support the work.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Parker. Follow up on a question you mentioned in TSS teams.
Yes, I'm sorry. Apologize. So that is the multi-tiered system of supports, which is really looking at from a preventative and proactive standpoint, uh, how are we able to look at various sorts of data regarding students? So not just the academic data, which of course is important, but also attendance data. Uh, we are in the process with students of administering, starting next week, surveys to students around specific, uh, categories such as like sense of belonging is one of the categories. So based upon that information, we're able to identify which students might be, uh, certainly doing well. And so we hope to identify students who are doing well, but then also students who might be struggling in specific areas. And our goal is to align our supports with the students who needed the most. And so as we've provided, uh, several personnel through different grant funds, uh, all of those are in conjunction with the MTSS process. So in other words, there should be a referral at the school level, uh, through their MTSS teams, which principals, school councils, social workers are certainly a part of that. Parents are of course a part of that as well, uh, but that allows for an intervention to take place and then data to be tracked during the course of that intervention. And so Panorama is the, uh, platform that we've purchased to support MTSS. And so it allows us to go in and to see that student has an intervention plan, this is the length of the intervention plan, and this is the specific metrics or data points that are being collected during the course of that process. So for instance, our art therapist has created, I believe somewhere around, uh, 49 intervention plans for the students that that art therapist is working with, just as an example. And so we can go in and see the duration of the plan, how frequently, uh, she meets with those students and the data she's collecting along the way. And so with all of our grants, uh, for mental health supports, uh, that's the model that we're using to make sure that we're continuing to get better in terms of data collection, but making sure that it's aligned with student needs. Yes.
It's more of a clarification. So because these parents don't have to opt the children in, that means sometimes there will be children in a program and their parents may not know that they have the issues that they're dealing with in the program. So what is the space to keep the child protected and to still allow the parent to know what's, what, what is going on?
Yes.
About losing a child in the program?
Sure. And so we will, uh, certainly do some education with parents around. So the grant, uh, also does involve parent education opportunities. And so we've initially discussed, but have not committed to, because again, it's an initial, uh, early stages, uh, linking with parent university as an example, as well as specific school buildings in terms of parent training. And so that will provide an opportunity for a parent to have a holistic understanding of what's involved in the program, what sort of, uh, assignment students might be asked to complete as a part of that, what that would look like if there are some delicate issues that may come up. Uh, obviously, we're mandated reporters, so there's certain elements we're required to report. But then there's a lot of spaces where, again, we're trying to make sure that these individuals are working closely with our school-based counselors and social workers. So there are additional follow-ups that need to be done with specific parents, that that will occur as well. And again, that's why we also wanted to be intentional to start in January, so that provides enough opportunity for, again, us to work through all those, uh, complex issues that may arise. Absolutely, and we share that same thought as well.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
Thank you.
Okay, last but certainly not least, our facilities report, you have an update, Mr. Robertson?
Yes, I do. Sorry for, um, not having a printout, but good evening.
Good evening.
Um, so just a quick, um, facilities report, and it, it is what it is, is a quick report. Um, we'll get more in depth with some of these things that, uh, I, I bring up. So for Chester High, so just some quick things. So the boys and girls locker room is under renovation. It's about like 90% completed. Uh, right now, we're just waiting on the, um, the lockers to come for the completion of that. Also at Chester High, um, the cheerleaders' locker room, under design.
Is it?
It's under design. So that's under design. Once, um, the designs are completed, it'll go out for bids and then we'll update as we go. You're so welcome. Um, so we still have, um, a cleaning service, um, from Tuck's janitorial service. Right now, their job is to go around all the buildings and their hours are from 11:00 at night to 7:00 in the morning. And what they do is they pretty much do all the deep cleaning. They do some of the things that our staff members aren't able to do during the course of a day because of staff and students and residents and visitors being in the building. So they're picking up that slack for now. Also Chester High, um, all the bathrooms have been renovated. Still a little bit of concerns with some of the things that, um, are going on in the bathrooms. Uh, we'll address that later, like some of the, um, you know, toilet pa, not toilet paper, but some of the dispensers that are being, you know, uh, whatever. But we'll, we'll address that as, as we go along. I am currently meeting, about to have some meetings with some of the principals on some of the things that are going on in the bathrooms as far as like the dispensers, the tile dispensers and all that. But we'll, we'll, I'll give you an update on that as well. So all the bathrooms are pretty much renovated. Uh, for Toby Farms, um, that renovation is 99% complete. Um, one of the things that, uh, may sit 99 and not that 1% is that we are doing a checklist. We're checking, um, all the projects. We're going to each room, to the top of the roofs, making sure that everything is pretty much, um, what was on the contract. So Toby Farms is a complete renovation. There's also an engineer's report out, um, for some of these things that I'm also mentioning. Um, also at Toby Farms, uh, they have a new gym there. Just real quick, they have new, uh, rooftop units, new windows, seven tiles, four tiles, all brand new. And like I said, um, gym is beautiful. You guys gotta get over there and see it, and I know you will. Main Street, uh, so at Main Street, there was some installation of the AC and heating units. That's 100% complete. And they have a playground, new playground, which is 90% completed. Chester Upland School of the Arts, uh, upgrades in the boys and girls bathrooms, um, new windows, um, the colors, once again, I picked the colors out. Um, new rooftop units, um, new chiller, um, has been added, a new playground, 100% complete. Um, and there are future projects, including flooring throughout the building. So just to bounce on that real quick. So the flooring side of Coussa is pretty much what it is. Um, their grant south is called an hair grant, and it pretty much targets, you know, asbestos and all that stuff. So we did apply for that one. I wanna say we, we, we did get the grant, so I'll be updating you guys on that as well. Um, so to STEM, STEM, we have a lot of future plans. The main thing with STEM is I'm, I'm dealing with like a lot of plumbing issues. So one of the things is to revamp, to get the plumbing issues together and some roof, you know, some roofing issues that I, you know, I see that we have. So that's pretty much of STEM. For the ESA, this is 1450. We have two ESAs now. So for 1450, brand new playground, that's 100% complete. The stesser, our baby, future plans, we're on discussion with some of the future plans with stesser. Uh, of course, you all know that stesser is pretty much still owned by Wyner, so we haven't forgotten stesser. We, we, we have stesser in our heart and in our mind, so we're gonna work on that. The other ESA, 1350, the admin building. Um, so pretty much that area has been renovated and we have new students there. Ready for the new students. They're, um, they're, they're beautiful there, so we're gonna keep working on having, um, you know, 1350, uh, with more improvements and with the students there, um, you know, yeah. Yeah, so the students. So I, so one of the things that I'm stuttering with that 1350 thing is for the students there, it's new, it's new. So I'm learning some things as we go with having students and the admin there. You know, we have the security piece, we have the safety issues and all that stuff, but nothing bad. So we're, we're working on pretty much that. So in conclusion, you know, the district is actively engaged in enhancing the facilities throughout the various renovation projects. Um, some of the efforts focus on improving the functionality of that, of the schools and ensuring safety and, safety and appeal to the schools for ensuring safety and conducive environment for students. Further updates will be provided as we go. So just real quick, um, that's not in this report. And like I said, there's an engineer report out also for this. So real quick, um, right now, uh, I, I oversee, I wanna say 20 something men and women. Uh, right now, the way everything has been placed as far as the staff, um, we're not able to get deep down and dirty with some of the facilities. Um, I spoke with, um, the superintendent earlier, we're gonna meet sometime within the next two weeks to see how we can get these facilities back to what they used to be. And it's gonna come with work, it's gonna come with dedication. And my job is to keep the locker room with the men and women that I have now. Um, when I first came here, they were, you know, they were, I guess, a little downward or whatever. I see it coming up. I, I see progress. I see the wheels about to hit the ground. So I wanna say that things are changing. I have a couple, uh, of my employees that, you know, unfortunately, they haven't been emailing, they're emailing me now and I'm getting these things back when I first came in. They just, but they're starting to email. I had to put a system together, we're gonna put a system together, and we're gonna get these schools back up to par.
One question.
You're welcome.
Question. On the contractor, which contractor that's doing the, uh, work through the, through the night?
Um, Tucks.
Tucks?
Tucks Janitorial.
Okay, and that's across the district or just?
Across the district, yes.
Okay, good.
You said that you wanted to have two different shifts for the employees, but there is a portion of time where like almost everybody is, is working.
Yes.
So has that been split up?
It hasn't. It hasn't.
Is that something that you're still working on?
That's something I'm still working on, yes.
Question.
Yes.
Now that we're about to change, you know, from summer to winter, how confident are you in the, uh, wintertime HVAC system?
I'm confident with, um, the leadership that I'm behind. Um, and the reason why I say the leadership behind, they, they've been 100%, you know, had my back. So one of the things that we have to do, we have to put these RFPs together, um, to get, um, companies out here to, um, do the preventive maintenance on some of the systems. The preventive maintenance on these systems have been what they've been. I don't wanna talk about the past or, we have to get it right. So I'm confident behind the leadership that I'm behind that. We can get these, you know, preventive making things in a process. So I wanna say in about another week or two, we're gonna start digging into the, um, RFPs for certain things, not just for the HVAC, but for some things like for the elevators, for the plumbing, for the electric. There's a lot of things that comes with being a facilities supervisor. So we're trying to put some of these things in place, like the HVAC system where we can have, you know, when someone modern to, and giving us reports, quarterly reports on what we need to do to turn it over to the summer, turn it over to the winter, all these things. So I got a call by a super, superintendent the other day, and she said the rule of thumb is October the 15th to turn it over. I said, you're 100% right. So that's something that, you know, we're working on, working on. So right now, I also have to keep in mind that I, I, I look at a lot of news, I look at a lot of weather. So instead of keeping on the heat right now, what we did, we just turned the air off. We have some days that's coming up on 70, 78, 79. I think I even seen an 80 in here somewhere. So what I did was we just turned the air off for now, and we're working on some of the things that may come up when we turn the boiler on, we turn the heat on and all that stuff. So I'm confident.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. And as we shared, we are going to play and be prepared because the last year we were one of six staff and six students, right? We went all here.
Exactly.
So we will have heat.
Exactly. All right, thank you, thank you.
All right, I think that you do, um, I'm taking it for leaving.
Um, I wanna thank the directors for coming in and seeing and doing a phenomenal job that they are.
Thank you.
Thank you. And also our residents, we thank you for, uh, coming in. And I failed to mention earlier, when we were talking about the student who, they're in their progress, I forgot to mention their rhetorical contact, which is led by Ms. Oriole and Ms. Amanda here. Those students, the way they recite those speeches is phenomenal. When I saw them last year, they just blew my mind. So, um, there is progress. There is progress happening. Um, with that, if no one else has anything, motion to a chair?
So moved.
All right, just meeting its turn.
Motion has been.